Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. Before we get started tonight, we have a very special presentation. So Chief, would you like to make an introduction, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, good evening and good evening, members of council. It is my pleasure to introduce to you one of our newest officers, Officer Tanisha Carroll. She is a 2010 graduate of Trotwood Madison High School and a 2016 graduate of the Dayton Police Academy, where she spent the first part of her career with the Dayton Police Department before coming to us here a couple of weeks ago. She also has an Associate of Applied Science degree in Business Management from Eastern Gateway Community College that she received in July of '22. And as I mentioned, she has just come to us from the Dayton Police Department, and she comes to us with proficiency in criminal law and determination to serve our residents with exceptional integrity and fairness. And she takes pride in her law enforcement career and has told us during the interview process, she's very excited about working in our community that is obviously very supportive and community-driven with the various different activities we have here to support the community. She will be assigned to a training officer, and upon successful completion of that process, she'll be assigned to a shift under the control of the Shift Sergeant. We just welcomed here a couple of weeks ago Tanisha and her family to our family, and I just thought I would formally introduce you here tonight and let her have a few words.
Please do. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Councilmembers, Mayor, I just wanted to say I'm very honored to be here, looking forward to many, many years with the Dayton Police Department and serving and protecting this amazing city. I just want to thank you all for this warm welcoming, and again, I'm happy to be here.
Well, we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.[115.42][115.42][applause]
All right. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Duer.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz. Vice Mayor Garcia. Mayor Stone.
Here. Do I have a motion?
Motion to excuse Vice Mayor Garcia.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Vice Mayor Garcia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. This time, I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Schwartz for the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could, I'd ask for the Junior ROTC to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If y'all want to come up front, that would be wonderful.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you could remain standing for just a minute. With the Thanksgiving season upon us, I thought that this would be a great time just to mention a few of the things that I am thankful for. So one of the first things I'm thankful for is for our veterans, both current and past. As we all had the opportunity to celebrate them this weekend, I think it's important to remember to thank them for their service every day, because without their dedication, their commitment, and their sacrifice, we would not be living in this free nation. And while sometimes it's not perfect, I can't imagine a better place to live. I'd also like to thank our police officers and first responders. They're on the front lines here in our community in keeping us safe. I'd also like to thank my fellow councilmembers and staff. It is an incredible pleasure to serve with these individuals, and I know without a doubt that each one of them is working to keep the city's best interests in their heart and to make this community a better place. And last and certainly not least, I just want to thank my family for all of their love and support. Sometimes I may stretch myself too thin, and sometimes I may be a little bit out of control, so I just appreciate that they are there to support me and keep me going. And so I'd ask that we all just take a moment of silence to bow our heads and reflect on the things that each of us is thankful for before this Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you. We have an agenda before us this evening. Any changes?
Move we approve the agenda, Your Honor.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two sets of minutes to look at tonight. First is October 17th, which is a work session minutes. Any comments?
Move to approve the October 17th minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from October 17th as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the October 24th regular session minutes. Any comments?
Move we approve October 24th regular session minutes, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from October 24th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Guess everybody was here. And now, we do have a special presentation. We have the pre-scheduled speakers. We have Beaver Creek's Junior Air Force ROTC. You guys want to come forward and give us your program for the night?
Mayor Stone, members of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Cadet Colonel Harrison Jacob, and with me tonight, I am joined by my Deputy Commander, Cadet Louis Burkett.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am the Deputy Corps Commander of Beaver Creek Air Force ROTC. I'm a senior. This is my second year with the program, and Beaver Creek Air Force ROTC has given me the opportunity to attend American Legion Buckeye Police Day at the time. Thank you.
Wow, very nice.
Additionally, I'm joined by Cadet Isaiah Segovia.
I'm a public affairs officer at the program. I'm a senior. I've been in all three years.
And lastly, Cadet Isabella Solis.
I'm Isabella Solis, and they actually had some talk with me by measures. I'm in the coverage of all the things that I'm doing.
Thank you.
Currently, I am a senior at Beaver Creek High School and a four-year member of its Air Force Junior ROTC program. Now, our program is a relatively new one. We were established in 2018 and are currently in our fifth year of operation. Throughout my time in the program, I've had several unique experiences, including rising to the position of Group Commander, where I'm responsible for the unit's 150 cadets. However, I'm not here tonight to discuss my accomplishments, rather, I'm here to talk about the accomplishments of our unit. The mission of Air Force Junior ROTC is pretty straightforward. We strive to develop citizens of character dedicated to serving their nation and community, and one that we feel we've done a pretty good job at. As I mentioned, we are a relatively new unit, only in our fifth year, but we certainly carry ourselves as one much senior to our age. Since our start, we have strived for excellence in all we do. In fact, our unit was on display last October during our first-ever four-year unit evaluation by Headquarters AFJ ROTC, where we were rightfully awarded Distinguished Unit with Merit accolades based on our outstanding performance. With that being said, I'd like to take a couple of minutes to highlight some of our accomplishments in those four short years. We are undoubtedly one of the most active units in the country. Almost every weekend of the school year, you can find some of our cadets out and about serving their community. This has accumulated in our cadet corps, accumulating over 12,000 community service hours in Beaver Creek and the surrounding Miami Valley. While our cadets are devoted and dedicated to serving our community, they also spend hundreds of hours working on perfecting their skills in any of our highly successful clubs and teams. These hard-working cadets have amassed over 14,000 leadership development hours in their pursuit of our core values of integrity first, service before self, and excellence in all we do. Some highlights include our impressive drill team, who is ranked as the 2021 Ohio State Champions and placed top three in the nation and the 2022 National Championship. Additionally, our academic team finished seventh out of 492 other teams in the 2021 Academic Championship at Washington, DC. While there are too many achievements by our outstanding cadets to discuss here, it wouldn't be possible without our instructors. We are fortunate to have two amazing leaders and mentors, in Major Whitlow and Senior Master Sergeant Mackey, both who have also been recognized nationally by Headquarters AFJ ROTC by receiving the coveted Outstanding AFJ ROT instructor award in 2022. We have benefited greatly from this program, as well individually. Since our inception, our cadets have amassed nearly $5 million in scholarships and enlisted bonuses to serve in the military. We have former cadets currently attending universities such as the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, Michigan State, University of Virginia, The Citadel, Ohio University, and Ohio State University, amongst many more. Many of these cadets are attending these universities on AFROTC scholarships earned by being a part of the program at Beaver Creek High School. We even have one of our outstanding alumni at the West Point Military Academy and another former cadet at the United States Air Force Academy. Not only have many of our cadets received college scholarships, four of our cadets, myself included, have been able to gain their private pilot's license at the AFROTC Flight Academy, each slot valued at over $25,000. These scholarships are not the only impact on our high school experience. Our unit always goes above and beyond for our curriculum and action field trips. Earlier this year, we took a majority of our cadets to visit Wright Patterson Air Force Base, where they were able to tour the air traffic control tower and even tour the flight deck of a C-17 aircraft. Additionally, during the 2021 through 2023 school year, we took 45 cadets to the Big Apple, New York City, where many cadets told us about the lifelong memories they made on this four-day trip. Not to be outdone by the previous year, in March of 2023, we will be taking 45 cadets to Niagara Falls and a trip to Boston, Massachusetts, where we will plan to visit the landmarks of the city that began to form our great nation. As I close, I would like to add that Beaver Creek Air Force Junior ROTC, it's more than just a class. It's more than just a team. It's a family. A family of cadets that have come together due to the great love they feel for their country. I could go on and on about Beaver Creek AFJ ROTC and what it has to offer, what it has done for me and my fellow cadets. We owe so much to a program and to our instructors that have given us so much. As my final word, I would like to invite you to listen to the Cadet Creed that each and every one of our cadets state at the start of each class day that embodies the core values for which we stand for. Cadets, I am an Air Force Junior ROTC cadet. I am connected and faithful to every Corps of Cadets who serve the community and nation with patriotism. I earn respect, and I uphold the core values of integrity first, service for self, and excellence in all we do. I will always conduct myself to bring credit to my family, school, Corps of Cadets, community, and to myself. My character defines me. I will not lie, cheat, or steal. I am accountable for my actions and deeds. I will hold others accountable for their actions as well. I will honor those I serve with, those who have gone before me, and those who will come after me. I am a patriot, a leader, and a wingman who voted to those I follow, serve, and lead. I am an Air Force Junior ROTC cadet. For the City Board, I will open up to any questions you may have.
Well, it's a very impressive presentation, I will say that.
Very much, Mr. Mayor.
Much appreciated. Questions? Comments?
I just have a comment.
Go.
You know, I've seen the Junior ROTC in action many places throughout the community, many different events, and the volunteer spirit that everyone exudes, the professionalism, has just been fantastic. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
You know, Beaver Creek has known the school system for being top-notch, and it always has been, and this is just another notch in the belt of the school system to have the ROTC there. So, and it's you, you enlistees or what, I'm cadets or whatever the right term is, you're the ones that make it happen, and so we appreciate it. We always enjoy seeing you wherever we're at. This is my third day in a row that I've, almost in a row. I didn't see you yesterday. But they were also, in addition to being color guard at our Veterans Memorial, they were in a parade out at the Dayton VA on Saturday, covered with snow, as it was windy and snowy, and, but it was a really nice parade. And then, of course, again today. So thank you for being here, and you're welcome back anytime you want to inform us about what's going on, and if there's anything that, you know, we can open a door for you, you just ask.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Mr. Mayor Stone, members of the Board, thank you very much for your time.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.[870.38][870.38][applause]
Now, I will say that you are allowed to excuse yourself. You do not have to stay for the whole meeting, but you're more than welcome if you would like.[888.01][888.01][laughter]
Probably have some homework to do.
I would say they might have a little homework. Bye-bye now.
Good job, guys.
All right. Next on the agenda is Ordinance 22-25.
Ordinance 22-25, an ordinance rezoning 2.5 acres from B2, Community Business District, and R-1A, One Family Residential, further described as Book 5, Page 5, Parcells 171, 172, and 173 on the property tax maps of Green County, Ohio, to see PUD 22-3, Commercial Planned Unit Development.
Thank you. This is the second reading. Staff, anything new? All right. Questions by anybody? Anybody have any further comments? This was sponsored by Councilmember Duer, and so when you're ready, you may proceed.
A motion to approve Ordinance 22-25.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 22-25. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is one I'm going to ask to be excused. I'm going to set the gavel over here and ask Councilmember Adams to run this session.
Next up is Ordinance 22-26.
Ordinance 22-26, an ordinance amending Commercial Planned Unit Development, PUD 96-2, further described as Book 3, Page 10, Parcel 171, on the property tax maps of Green County, Ohio, to add permitted uses to the PUD.
Again, this is a second reading. Is there anything from staff?
Yes, thank you. At the first reading, the applicant was unable to make the meeting, so I wanted, with Council's permission, give them the opportunity to give their brief presentation to go over from their point of view what this project's about, just to get their piece in on that. Thanks.
The applicant? State your name and address, if you would, please.
Micah North, 1645 Glenwood Way in Sugar Creek Township. Council, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to come up and speak about what our plans are. I'm, Micah, name's Micah North. I'm the CEO of Resident Sciences, and we're excited to say that business has been good, and we're continuing our expansion in the local area. We've grown from, there were six of us when we started about seven years ago, and we're about 100 and 130 or so folks now, and so we've just had tremendous growth, and we've grown out of everything that we've had. And so the new property is an opportunity for us to continue that expansion. The work that will be done in that building will be primarily engineering design work, so there's not going to be, you know, any kind of heavy manufacturing or anything like that. So it'll be primarily design work with some robotic assembly and things like that. We build measurement systems for aircraft and support the aerospace community, so. Any questions?
I'd like to thank you for your ongoing investment in Beaver Creek. It really is remarkable to see how your company has grown, and I regularly see engineering students and just to know that they have such opportunities to stay in this area. It really is magnificent, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Appreciate the opportunity.
This was a public hearing, and this is the second reading, but if there's anybody in the, from the citizen that would like to speak for or against, please do so, since the applicant wasn't here last time. All right. Citizen comment section is closed. Anything from staff or from council? This is sponsored by Councilmember Curran.
Move 22-26, approve Ordinance 22-26.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passed. I think the mayor should be coming back now, so.
I'll say the same thing to the applicant. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting.[1203.15][1203.15][laughter] You're welcome to.[1205.26][1205.26][laughter] Next is Ordinance 22-28.
Ordinance 22-28, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $1,095,000 Special Obligation Bond Anticipation Notes by the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, providing for the pledge of revenues for the payment of such notes and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Kassera.
I can really clear the room, can't I?
You can.[1236.78][1236.78][laughter] I helped you out just a little.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. If you recall, back in September 26th, I believe, we had a meeting that discussed the opportunity that we have with the Miami Valley Research Park Foundation, who have three parcels of property for sale that we believe is a strategic match for the city and a partnership with the Beaver Creek Development Corporation. This purchase of the three parcels, two of which will facilitate the completion of our major project, the Willow Crest Stormwater Project, and the acquisition of the land will foster and promote further desired development within the city of Beaver Creek. After we talked about that, and it was affirmed that we wanted to go forward with that, this is really the financing piece. So what this legislation does is puts out there for the initial land acquisition, the issuance of a bond anticipation note not to exceed $1,095,000. That includes the purchase price, the closing, and the band issuance cost for those 69 acres that we were talking about back in September. These are special obligation bonds. They're not really geo-bonds. They don't, aren't backed by the property taxes. They're actually backed by other special revenue. So again, what they do with the backing of this is they don't use property taxes, they use everything else, hotel, motel, other revenue sources that we have in the general fund to back the obligation. What you see in the ordinance itself are not to exceed numbers. Those are numbers that we project to be the highest possible number. So again, you see that listed as the highest amount, and the interest rate currently at 6%. When we originally did that, we thought 6% was really lofty. We'll see how that turns out when we actually go ahead and sell these bands. But what we've done is, we're slated to sell these in December and close on the properties within that timeframe, and because of that timing and to get this in before any other market adjustments happen, this ordinance has to be done as an emergency, which means that it'll be at the first reading and the second reading, but the 30 days are waived at the back end. So again, we can get this closed at the 28th meeting of November and then sell the bonds or the bands in December. So be happy to answer any questions you might have. Again, we've utilized a bond attorney. We have a broker that's helping us sell this out there, and again, we've had the bond attorney review all of these documents to make sure that they're okay. Again, just to let you know that the city's bond rating is an A, capital A, A2, which is the third highest rating that you can get through the Moody's system. And also, keep in mind that the golf course were on their last debt payment in February, so that would tend to boost that up a little bit higher even after that is completed, too. So just wanted to give you the update on our current credit rating. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Mr. Kassera, let me see if there's any public here. This is the first reading of this ordinance. Is there any public here that would like to address counsel on this ordinance? Seeing none, are there any questions for Mr. Kassera?
I'm so glad to see us move in this direction and the efforts to develop that land and to give Beaver Creek a real positive approach in the area of development. I think it's great.
Anyone else?
You mentioned the Moody's, Moody rating. Is there a standard in poor's or a Fitch rating as well?
They all have the rating, but they're the ones that commonly rated us through our other debt transactions, so again, that's the one I always use, but.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, I appreciate it. There's no other, if there are no other questions, do I have a motion?
I'll motion to move Ordinance 22-28 to the second reading as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move Ordinance 22-28 onto the second reading as an emergency, and we might as well practice then, even though this is not required, but how about a roll call?
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Duer.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Council time. We're moving right along. Councilmember Duer, would you like to be first for a chance?[1563.03][1563.03][laughter]
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. It took me by surprise.[1567.03][1567.03][laughter] We had a wonderful Veterans Day recognition. I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for leading that, and as well Chief Master Sergeant Jamie Newman for a really wonderful speech. I grew up in the United Kingdom. I lived in Canada for 10 years. I've lived in the other side of Ohio, and sometimes people ask me, what's it like to live in Beaver Creek? You know, what's kind of the city? And my frequent reply is, there's a bona fide American hero on every corner legitimately, and it really is amazing to see that on Veterans Day, just the sheer number of people that have sacrificed for our community and our country, and really, as Councilmember Schwartz noted, just freedom around the world. There's so much that pertains to this, and I think so positively of our Junior ROTC students that are here, just that legacy that will continue. I just kind of sat for a few moments earlier today being really optimistic about the future with that, but really, a wonderful Veterans Day. I'd like to welcome Tanisha Carroll to the department. Really excellent background, excited to have her as well. Had the great opportunity to be alongside Councilmember Bales with the park tour. We had an opportunity to see the 148-acre, and to thank Mike Thonero and Kim Farrell for their time and expertise, and it really is fun to ride with you, Pete, because you have such an amazing background. And I just, I didn't think of that question. I didn't consider that, and so, but to continue encouraging the public and to thank the public for so many people responding to the survey and to give us ideas, and we're just going to keep looking for that, because there are so many that say, hey, we want to keep the land fairly kind of natural, and others say, hey, can you do all these other things? And so we're going to do our best to take that all into consideration. But I'm really thankful for the tour and a lot of great envisioning that can be done there, so. I'd also like to thank everyone for voting. Really an amazing turnout in Beaver Creek for the election. There's a lot to consider, a lot to think through. I've been getting a lot of feedback from the public already in terms of just the levies and things to discuss, and so, but thank you to everyone for considering what was on the ballot. It gives us much to consider, and I guess we'll see with final results as they become known, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bales.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Duer, you couldn't have said it any better about Veterans Day and about our community. You know, I've grown up here, and so I kind of sometimes just take it for granted that there's military all over the place, and there is, but it's days like Veterans Day that really make you reflect and appreciate what we've got in our community, and the ceremony was fantastic, and it was nice to see all of us, all of us there. I, too, had a ball on the park tour. I know that we all got a chance to go through that 148 acres, and I wish that everyone in the community could get on that gator and take a tour around that park, because of... the community could get on that gator and take a tour around that park because really we have, it's a gem. It's a gem.
Incredible.
And I realize that developing it is going to be challenging. It's not going to happen overnight. It's going to be a process, but just to have that property, even in its current state, is awesome. So that's just great. I too want to thank everyone for voting last week. I appreciate every time we have an election because we get an opportunity to hear what our community desires. And with that said, it leads into my next comment about our budget work sessions, which will be this Wednesday and then next Monday. And so I'd encourage people who are interested in knowing where city revenues come from and then how we plan our expenditures to attend those meetings at 5:00. They're open to the public and I guarantee anyone who comes will learn a lot about our revenues and expenditures. Finally, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to welcome Officer Carroll to the Police Department. She comes with a lot of good credit, I guess. I mean, she's done a lot of good things in Dayton and I think she'll do some even better things here. I want to thank the junior ROTC for coming and making their presentation. I was fortunate enough to be involved with Civil Air Patrol in a different life and watching these kids grow and do the things that they do. And I know he was, just mentioned a few things they do, but these kids do amazing things for the community and for, actually for themselves. They really grow a lot in these programs. I was able to tour the new parkland with Councilman Schwartz and got lost two or three times, had no idea where I was. It's a big space, but there's some real opportunities for a lot of things over there. As Councilman Bales said, it's not going to happen overnight, but I think it's going to be a kind of a living thing. It's going to continue to grow and build as we go. As people want different things, we'll find ways to get them there. Was able to attend the retirement of Robert Eggleston, the records clerk for the Police Department. We have one less British speaker now in the city. That's just you, Glenn. But Robert is a good guy. I hated to see him go, but it was time for him to move on. I attended the Dayton Business Breakfast along with Mayor Stone. That was sponsored by the Beaver Creek Chamber of Commerce. That was an interesting morning. They're planning to do those, I think, three or four times a year, so that should be a good activity to continue to go to. I was able to attend the Family Violence Prevention Center's annual meeting along with Councilman Bales and that's really kind of a special program out there. I'm really concerned that we need it, but I'm really glad that it's there because it does a lot to help the people in the Green County area who are struggling with things that we really have no idea what they're going through, so. Veterans Day celebration, again, thank you to Mayor Stone for arranging that. That was a really good program. I really enjoyed that one even, and you know, I don't know who did it, but the rain stopped for that period of time and I think Pete was trying to claim credit for that, so. But it worked out really well and we've had some interesting weather for those Veterans Day presentations. And I too would like to thank everybody for coming out to vote. I think it's good that people come out and voice their opinion. That's really the only way we have of really doing that on a large scale and as has already been said, we've got some things to talk about and to work on as we go forward, but I do appreciate everybody coming out to vote. And I think with that, I will say that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. A few weeks ago, I had the opportunity to attend the Kiwanis Open House and Councilmember Adams joined us. It was a great ceremony, but I just wanted to give a special thanks to Paul Otten, who came out and spoke about the schools and the status of the schools and kind of how things are going there. It's always nice to get that input wherever you can. I, as was mentioned across the board, also attended the park tour as well as the park community input session and it is, you know, I couldn't say it better than any of my fellow council members, that land is incredible and much like Councilmember Bales said, I wish that you could take the community along because having been to the planning session where you kind of see and there's these ideas, you really don't get the full picture until you're out there and you see the terrain and the lay of the land and how much has actually been farmed opposed to, you know, where are the actual tree lines and things? It's just, it is really incredible and we are very, very lucky to have it. So I look forward to seeing what happens in the next few years with that property. I would also like to thank Mayor Stone and staff for the Veterans Day ceremony. It was a fabulous event. I was very surprised to see the turnout. We had a great turnout given the weather and I was also very glad that the rain held off. It was a short ceremony, but it was very, very impactful and so I think that that was important to have our residents out there and recognize our veterans in this community. I also would like to congratulate Officer Carroll on joining the Police Department here. She will be a tremendous asset and best wishes to her as she moves through the training program and onto the streets soon. Last, I did want to mention Election Day and thank all of the residents for coming out to vote. We really had an incredible voter turnout this time. I wish that we saw that voter turnout more frequently and we do have a lot to think about. And so as my fellow council members have mentioned, I would encourage you to attend the budget planning session, not just to kind of see what we go through and how closely we look at the budget every year, but also to provide your input on things that maybe you aren't interested in or things that maybe you think we could change. We are not all experts up here and there are a lot of innovative and creative ideas and so always willing to listen to what the residents have to say and take those things into consideration. And with that, I think that's all I have, Mayor.
Very good.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carr.
Welcome to Officer Carroll, which has already been mentioned many times by my fellow council members and welcome to our community and I'm sure she'll be a highly effective officer. Also, I want to again congratulate Mayor Stone. I think we had a great veterans program. I particularly loved the speaker. I think it really came from his heart and it was kind of an interesting, interesting presentation that he made, but I thought it was really super even though we had a little rain here and there. I think it was really great. Also, toured the park with the mayor and we had the opportunity in our tour to see wild deer and somebody said something, there might even be some wild turkey. We didn't see a turkey, I don't think, but we did see, we did see a deer.
Not going to say. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
But anyhow, that was, that was a great trip and gee, we just saw all kinds of possibilities there for the future and it was really an exciting time. Also want to mention the.
Wild turkey comes in a bottle, doesn't it?
What?
Doesn't wild turkey come in a bottle?
Oh, I'm not, well, what can I say, Your Honor?
Go right ahead.
I don't think we were talking about that kind of turkey, but maybe another. Also, I want to mention Flags for Heroes. Dayton Rotary has that each year in concert with the veterans program and got the flags up this year and as people who are listening know, there are many, many military who are honored by that event as well as close ones, loved ones in your family that you might want to honor and it was really exciting to see those flags up and people having an opportunity to go over and tour it. So it was really super. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mayor's time, just a few things I'm going to add. I'm not going to repeat most of this, but we've talked in many times about our upcoming budget meetings and I want people when they, if they do come, and I hope they do, to realize that just because we may not say a lot sometimes, we have been, this budget has started back from our work session and from back in the summer when we had our retreat. So it's not something that's new to a lot of us. So if you have questions, make sure you bring the question because we're not always going to get into depth on everything. The Veterans Day, it was, it turned out very good. The band of flight changed the rotation of the, of the military songs on me, but that's all right. Kept me awake, but we're always, we're always glad to have them at our celebrations for Memorial Day and Veterans Day. And of course, Command Chief, Master Sergeant Newman was very refreshing. It was very nice to, and he stayed around afterwards for a while and loosened up a little bit. He is, he's just a very gracious gentleman, so thanks, thanks to him. He also, I don't know if everybody saw it or not, but there were officers there from at least four other countries in uniform and they also stayed afterwards and had a good time, so it, and they came from the same, I can't get the acronym right probably, but the same unit that the Command Chief is in, they came out to support him as well. But it was very refreshing again to have them there, have them enjoy it and my only regret was that I didn't point them out during the ceremony and say, you know, that this is the type of community we have that everybody comes out and joins us. That said, I think I'm going to turn it over to the city manager. Well, I'm going to back up one time. The VFW, I don't know if anybody has seen it or not, but the, not the VFW, but the Dayton VA Medical Center had their first parade, Veterans Day Parade on Saturday. And you know what was happening on Saturday morning? Well, this was, the parade time was 10:00 and most of us were covered in white. The junior, the Air Force Junior ROTC was in the parade. They marched very astute, maybe is not the right word, but it's, they were really rigid and just, the weather didn't bother them one bit. But I had the privilege of being on the review stand with the director and it was, it was very enjoyable to go out and be part of that. Now I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief couple of things. As mentioned about the park, the online survey for the new park is still online. So far, there's like, as of late last week, there was over 1,900 surveys taken, so it only takes a few minutes to complete. So if you would go to the website, beavercreekohio.gov/newpark, you can pull up the survey and take that. A second public hearing, a public meeting forum for the park will be Thursday, November 17th from 6:00 to 7:30 and that is at Laffino Plaza, you know, in the same complex as the senior center. Please stop out and talk to a lot of council, staff, of course, the vendor that is conducting the master study will be there to take the feedback as well. So please attend that and remember to survey. I guess just on the levies, I think this has been mentioned, but thank residents for the high voter turnout. Over 20,000 residents voted on the city's two levies. The margin of the city's street levy is close and the result will, will probably result as a recount and we'll have to wait for the countywide absentee and provisional ballots to be completed. The city will wait for official election results before being able to release a statement regarding the streets levy. Additionally, as mentioned, the city residents voted down the police levy. We feel comfortable that that, that the number in, against was, will stand regarding, regardless of any of the provisional or absentee ballots, but the, the need for police services continues and the decisions on how to move forward will be decided by city council. This was mentioned, the budget meetings, November 16th and November 21st. Again, that is beginning at Wednesday at 5:00 PM and then the following Monday at 5:00 PM as well. Opportunity for residents to ask questions or provide comments are given after each department as well. The proposed 2023 budget is loaded and available on the website, so beavercreekohio.gov. You will see exactly what city council sees going to the website and looking at the article about the budget meetings and clicking on to download the budget, 2023 budget, proposed budget, little book that comes with it. Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. City offices will be closed November 24th and 25th. Non-emergency numbers, please if need something, call the Police Department, 426-1225. And just as a reminder, then the last meeting of the month for the regular meeting for city council will be on November 28th, 2022, if everybody is full of turkey and will be able to struggle to stay awake still after eating days of leftover, but we will still be here having a regular meeting on that Monday, the 28th. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you. All right, this time it's citizen comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address counsel on any issue whatsoever? Seeing none, we will move right along. Next is executive session. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the purpose of consideration of the purchase of property for public purposes.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilmember Bales. Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Duer.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes. And for everybody at, on the tube, there will be no decision coming out of the executive session, so the video portion of this meeting will end, but we will be back here and to reconvene and do the proper procedure to terminate this meeting, but there will be no action coming. We are in executive session.